Council Public Hearing Meeting to Order. And first off, before we get into the adoption of the minutes, I see in the audience, we have our friends from Cloverdale. And I expect that is to hear me later this evening, read the proclamation for the Cloverdale Rodeo Exhibition Week. But did you wish to speak for a moment, Mr. Claypool?
Thank you. Howdy all. We are eighteen days away from the biggest event in the city of Surrey annually put on by volunteers. And I brought with me a couple of the more senior volunteers than I am. I'm fairly new to this. I've only been on the board eighteen years. These two have both been on the board more than twenty. So I have the lovely Penny Smythe and Jerry Spielmacher. They have a little gift for each of the councillors that they'll come up and present to you. I just wanted to let everybody know, we're eighteen days out of our event. Great family event. Kids twelve and under are free when accompanied by an adult. We're doing some great things this year. We've got, Country Music Association is working with us to do a honky-tonk in the evening, artist showcases in the daytime. We brought in Richard's Racers. We've got a Western art show. We've moved our Stetson suite. We're rearranging things because we've got some plans for the future for the Stetson Bowl. I know you guys may have plans, we have our own. And we're looking forward to hosting, you know, eighty thousand to a hundred thousand people in eighteen days from today. And the Canucks helped us out by not carrying forward because, you know, I'm a Canucks fan, but I'm a Cloverdale rodeo fan first.
We're all fans of the rodeo and we look forward to the May long weekend with the usual excitement on the rodeo grounds.
And I think some of the new councillors, it'll be a great first time experience for them. I know some of you veteran councillors know how to wear your cowboy hats. So we appreciate your time, thank you.
Look forward to the parade too, that's always fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually look forward to wearing the Sheriff's Badge. For a lot of reasons. Well, we encourage everyone to go out and enjoy the rodeo, even for those of us who, this is not their first rodeo. Getting back to business, if I could look for an adoption of the minutes, please.
Second.
Regular council, April thirteenth. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, CIC, April thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, April thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, Finance Committee, April thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted, Finance Committee, April thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, April thirteenth.
Public hearing. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Madam Clerk, the first delegation, the public hearing this evening.
Thank you. The first bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw one eight four three six. The civic address is one five five six zero, One Hundred and Ninth Avenue. The applicant is Yu Sun Lee. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into six single-family lots.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? Please come forward, sir, to the podium.
Hi everyone, my name is Ray and I live right beside this area. My, I'm right beside which is RA. That is my, my home. And the problem is, I received the letter and it shows the back alley. And the back alley in this picture is all in my land.
Can we just have that up? It may be that it's future subdividable, we're...
Yes, and everyone can see the alley is not aligned with my cross to the one oh nine. It's not aligned. And we can add up with the, all the numbers, like five seventy-one, like meters, those things, add up all the numbers. I will be like a three hundred something shorted than the place that they planned. So which I means, I think the back alley is, there's two land to share the alley. It's not all on my land. If they don't change this when they build a building, will be very, very close to my existing house.
Perhaps, Mr. Planner, do we have an overhead that shows where this gentleman's property is in relation to this application?
Yes. Madam Mayor, the delegation's property is just to the east of the application. The subject application is highlighted in white here. And the delegation's property is next door to the east and this is the existing house here.
Okay, and your concern about that, sir, was what?
What I concern is, is that back alley is all in the picture, that previous picture, is the back alley is all they planned is in my backyard. It's not, they don't use any of their land to be a back alley. If you can move this one a little bit lower, you can see it's not aligned to my, the, no, can you move this one lower so I can see the cross of the one oh nine? Do you see the back alley is not aligned? Yeah. If that one, the cross, the one oh nine, that one, if you cross it, the back alley is five meter wide. And everybody should share, it's two point five meter. It's not moved to the east side. So it's not fair, I think.
What's the comment on that, Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, the, if you look to the south, there was a lane developed as part of those developments to the south. At the time, one fifty-six was an arterial road. Since that time, in two thousand and ten, the road was re-designated as a collector road. So we still would prefer to have the lane on the neighboring property when it develops. The current application, the subject application, takes access from the cul-de-sac. They do not take access from the lane. So the lane is really to serve the neighboring property.
So the lane is, the lane is being shown there as a future development option on that property because this property is defining its access from the cul-de-sac?
That's correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, and I have, like, draw the green line. Can I, can I show and you can see? It's supposed like, extend the, I don't know how to expand that. This should go further than go to, go straight. So they can make, everybody share the back alley. So my land can be safely be more. In one day, maybe my place need to divide it and sell it, will be better value.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That's all right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this application? First call, Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Compter, I'm the agent on this file, seven four eight five, One Thirty Street. Firstly, we just want to note that this is just a concept plan. The lane that's shown on this gentleman's property is not what is proposed. It is strictly a concept. As Mr. Engineer has just mentioned, there's other options to subdivide the property. So this gentleman doesn't have to build this lane, it's just a concept that allows him as an option to develop his land. There is other options that allows him to configure it in an alternate pattern if he feels the need to do so. But just to bring to the point, bring the point to the fore that the lane is not required for the application that's before you tonight. So lane is strictly to facilitate this gentleman's property. The other difficulty with his proposal is it reduces the lot yield on my client's property and it does not affect his lot yield. So what he would propose would reduce. Our development by a lot wouldn't affect his property at all. The original intent for the whole neighbourhood, when this was created, it was always intended to be this particular layout. So any deviation from it would have serious impacts on the developability of our client's property. That's really all I have to say, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Compter.
Thank you.
I see no questions. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk. Zoning Amendment bylaw one eight four three five. The address is six four eight four King George Boulevard. The applicant is Great Canadian Oil Change Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from local commercial to highway commercial industrial. The applicant is proposing to develop an oil change and car wash facility. In addition, a development variance is being sought to reduce the minimum side yard setback and the number of required parking spaces from five to four spaces. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have two persons wishing to speak to this bylaw. Mr. Alex Toparowski?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Alex Toparowski and I'm a Surrey homeowner, husband and father of two. I'm also a Surrey small business owner. My company, Aqua Wash Equipment, has its shop and office in Newton along One Thirty Second. The proponents for this project, Great Canadian Oil Change, are our clients. We helped them to find and acquire this site. And ultimately, we'll be building the building if approved. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak tonight as I know there's been some opposition to this project among council, which I presume relates to use, being an automotive oriented project. And while I certainly can't suggest our operation is not automotive oriented, I do want to take a moment and tell you about Great Canadian Oil Change, my company Aqua Wash, and the efforts we've been making to bring this project forward for approvals. Great Canadian Oil Change is a locally owned, family operated, quick loop franchise with approximately sixty-five stores across Canada. They're quite a Canadian success story. The Weflin family, who operate the franchise, opened their first store in Saskatoon in nineteen seventy-eight and started franchising their business in the early nineteen nineties as they moved to British Columbia. Their head offices are now located in Chilliwack, B.C. The founders, Trevor and Carolyn, mum and dad, still run the show. Four of their five children work in the organisation. The family own roughly one-fifth of the stores in the franchise. They will own this store and have no intentions to sell it. And they pride themselves on their building designs, which they feel are ahead of their competition, offering a more retail look and ultimately a more inviting store to customers with more glass and less of a concrete block garage feel. In this instance, here in Surrey, we started with the planning department with one of our higher order designs and have accommodated a number of enhancements requested by the planning staff in order to garnish staff support for our application. I should also mention our proposal includes the planting of eleven trees in the post-developing landscape areas, nearly double the city's requirement for six. And on that note, I should also stress that Great Canadian Oil Change take great pride in their environmental track record. Delivery, oh pardon me, all their stores use industry best practices for the controlled handling and storage of both waste and new oil. Delivery and pickup of the oil is handled only by licensed carriers. And they're proud to say that not once in their over thirty-five year history have they ever been deemed a source of soil or groundwater contamination. In fact, quite regularly, they find themselves cleaning up other people's messes as they often end up acquiring old gas station sites. And with the redevelopment of these sites being the impetus for the cleanup. Great Canadian Oil Change is a highly charitable organisation. The family sponsors over sixty children in the World Vision charity. They've donated over a hundred thousand dollars to local hockey associations. And they've made substantial contributions to local hospital funds and other organisations. And unlike some of their competitors, Great Canadian Oil Change are not owned or associated with any major international oil companies. My company, Aqua Wash Equipment, has been based here in Surrey for over ten years. To date, we've built over ten oil change facilities for Great Canadian in markets throughout western Canada, as far east as Saskatchewan. We help Great Canadian find the sites, we design the buildings, and we build the buildings. Great Canadian are our number one client and we think very highly of them and are proud to represent them. This project represents the culmination of a five-year search for a site for them in Surrey. And we're extremely excited to be doing one so close to home. I realise this might be my only opportunity to speak, so if council have any questions or objections that I could address, I'd ask that you please bring them forward now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I have another speaker wishing to speak in favour of this project and that is Mike Bernhardt.
Hi guys, good evening. My name is Mike Bernhardt and I'm an individual franchisee for Great Canadian Oil Change. My brother and I currently own three locations, two in B.C. and one in Alberta. And we really hope to make this, this new Surrey proposal our fourth store. Just to kind of expand on what Alex had spoken about, Great Canadian Oil Change is one hundred percent Canadian owned and operated with their head office just close by here in Chilliwack. All the locations are owned by independent franchisees. And, you know, we're just little guys, we're not big oil. Although we do have to buy a lot of product from them, we're all independently owned stores. Just some, you know, main points why, you know, I feel that we'll benefit the community by being here. We really pride ourselves on, on quality, quality of customer service and quality of work. And our locations, you know, really, really speak to this as far as cleanliness and how immaculately kept, you know, our landscaping and our locations are. You know, we make sure we've got the best looking building on the block wherever we do business. As well as all the recycling we do, we recycle a hundred percent of, you know, our, our used oils and automotive fluids and plastics and cardboards. We're also members of the B.C. Used Oil Management Association. And what that means is, we offer a place for, for the public to come and discard used motor oils, unwanted motor oils, automotive fluids, batteries, things of this nature. And it's absolutely free and, and, you know, we make sure it's recycled properly for them. Finally, you know, we know from experience operating these stores that we're going to employ between seven and ten full-time technicians at this Surrey location. These are good paying, full-time, you know, jobs, they're, they're not seasonal. Our employees stick around normally for the long haul. And they're good paying jobs with benefits. You know, our typical tack will make forty to sixty thousand per year. And, you know, they get to live close, close to home and, and work in a, in a nice place. So I just came here to express my support for this proposal. I'd be happy as a, as a store operator to be able to answer any questions any of you may have towards the, the business proposal.
I see no questions, Mr. Bernhardt. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, please, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning text amendment bylaw one eight four three four. The applicant is the city of Surrey. The purpose is to amend the city of, the Surrey zoning bylaw number twelve thousand in parts twenty to twenty-six in order to manage the amount of tandem parking spaces permitted within these multiple residential zones as described in the corporate report, twenty fifteen R zero five three.
Is there any, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. That concludes the public hearing portion of this agenda. Moving on to committee reports, may I have a recommendation on the police committee?
Move minutes be received, Police Committee, February sixteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received from Investment and Innovation Committee, February eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received Audit Committee, February twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor. Counselor Lefranck, did you want to speak to that?
Actually, it was the Investment in Innovation minutes. I just wanted to congratulate Counselor Hain on a really fabulous event that happened the other day. I was able to step in and, to staff here at the city for, it was a fabulous event. Sorry, I missed my opportunity there.
No, I think that was my fault, Counselor Lefranck. I didn't notice on the speakers list, so. Did I have a second there for the Audit Committee?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move, move the minutes to be received for Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, March twenty fifth, twenty fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor Starczuk.
I just wanted to make mention that the committee met last Wednesday and we had a delegation from EPCOS speak to the group that was there. And there were some issues that came forward and I just wanted to make sure that, that council was aware and staff were aware that the, the, most of what was said at that meeting is being looked at and hopefully it'll, it'll ease the concerns of all the area residents that showed up that evening for the meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Transportation and Infrastructure Committee?
Madam Mayor, I believe that recommendations need to be adopted for four B.
No, that's out of order. I believe that's, that was the point you were making, wasn't it, Counselor?
Yes, the, the motion that was there, it was dealt with last week.
At a previous meeting, yes, okay.
Move minutes be received for Transportation Infrastructure for March thirtieth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Social Policy Advisory Committee?
I'll move the recommendations at the Social Policy Advisory Committee, although I'm just moving them regarding the B.C. Poverty Reduction Plan, the resolutions to go to the UBCM and not the Hello Project because we don't have the background minutes at this time. So we're just dealing with those two resolutions. And Madam Mayor, if I might, I might put this in the hands of Counselor Lefranck because she attended the conference and brought those resolutions forward at the social policy meetings. So if you'd like to speak to those, Counselor Lefranck?
Thank you, Counselor Villanouve. So what came forward is that we're making a recommendation, resolutions entitled B.C. Poverty Reduction Plan, Funding for Poverty Reduction, to be forwarded to the twenty fifteen UBCM resolution process.
And are they in the...
They're included in our package. They're included in our package.
So I just need a second there for the, for the committee?
Do you want to second that?
Recommendations?
She's seconded it. And Madam Mayor, just to summarise the resolutions, the resolutions are calling on the province to have a poverty reduction plan. And we have a report coming through on corporate reports tonight, which I'll be speaking to. But we do have the highest level of child poverty in the Metro Vancouver area. And we do have a plan in place to really help facilitate any kind of funding that could come into this community. So the resolutions are resolutions that we're supporting with the B.C. Poverty Coalition in support of their endeavour to get a poverty reduction plan through the province.
Thank you, Counselor Villanouve. And we had a good session this afternoon at CIC and it's astonishing, isn't it, that there are twenty thousand of our children?
That's right.
So it's, it's an important resolution. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Audit Committee, April twenty.
Move minutes be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the Police Committee minutes of April twentieth.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Surrey Heritage?
D one, Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission, move to receive amendments.
Second.
On the fifth of March.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Will we receive the recommendations?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Now I'll ask your indulgence, I have a lot of proclamations tonight and I'll go through them here. First one is a day of mourning. We had a presentation this afternoon on this and at the city of Surrey will be having a ceremony tomorrow morning. Whereas every year, more than a thousand Canadian workers are killed on the job and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled and whereas hundreds of thousands are injured, whereas April twenty eighth of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a day of mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease, a day to remember the maximum sacrifice they have been forced to make in order to earn a living. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare April twenty eighth as a day of mourning in the city of Surrey in recognition of workers killed, injured or disabled on the job. And in recognition of that day, we will be flying the city's flags at half mast. Surrey World Labyrinth Day Walk is one at one, May the second. Whereas Surrey is a community that is enriched by the diversity of people, cultures, philosophies and religions, where the contributions of all are acknowledged and appreciated. Whereas World Labyrinth Day is designed to bring people from all over the world together to walk labyrinths at one, to create a wave of peaceful energy. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May two as Surrey World Labyrinth Day in the city of Surrey. Elizabeth Frye Week, May three to nine. Whereas the first Elizabeth Frye Society in the world was formed in British Columbia in nineteen thirty-nine to help women in conflict with the law. And whereas the Elizabeth Frye Society of Greater Vancouver celebrated seventy years of its service to the people of this area in twenty fourteen. And whereas to continue in its worthwhile and valued endeavours, Elizabeth Frye Society requests increased support from the people of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the week of May three to nine, Elizabeth Frye Week in the city of Surrey. Emergency Preparedness Week, May three to nine. Whereas the city of Surrey recognises the importance of emergency management and whereas Emergency Preparedness Week is designed to increase public awareness of the risks, planning and preparations that are necessary for any type of emergency or disaster. And whereas the city of Surrey encourages all citizens to have a family emergency plan in place, to be prepared with emergency supplies, to cope on your own for at least seventy-two hours, to recognise the hazards in our area such as floods, winter storms, power outages, hazardous materials, earthquakes, et cetera. And whereas the city of Surrey recognises volunteers as the heart of disaster response and whereas our most valuable resource is our children and we must educate and share with children the importance of family emergency preparedness. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May three to nine, Surrey Emergency Preparedness Week. Neighbourhood House Week, May three to nine. Whereas neighbourhood houses in Surrey open their doors to help create safe inviting places where people from all backgrounds and walks of life are welcomed and included. And whereas neighbours grow neighbourhoods and the effects of outstanding neighbours should be recognised and celebrated throughout the committee. And whereas the city of Surrey is committed to being an engaged, inclusive and socially just municipality, now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby... just municipality, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 3 to 9 Neighborhood House Week in the City of Surrey. North American Occupational Safety and Health Week, May 3 to 9, whereas the City of Surrey is committed to reducing workplace accidents and improving employee health and welfare. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, declare the week of May 3 to 9 North American Occupational Health and Safety Week in the City of Surrey. Mental Health Week, May 4 to 10, whereas the Canadian Mental Health Association, national initiative Mental Health Week celebrates its 64th years and whereas it is reported that men are more likely than women to develop schizophrenia at a younger age and are four times more likely to die by suicide than women, with the highest number of suicides occurring amongst men between the ages of 40 and 60 and whereas mental health literacy and education are vital in the prevention, the recognition, and the early treatment of mental illness and may reduce the severity of the illness or support the recovery of those experiencing a mental illness and whereas mental health awareness leads to caring and compassionate communities which are vital to the well-being of all citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 4 to 10 as Mental Health Week in the City of Surrey. Tai Chi Day, whereas the Buddhist, May 10, whereas the Buddhist Compassion Relief Tai Chi Foundation, originated in Taiwan, is one of the most active charitable organizations in the world, devoting itself to assisting people in need worldwide in the areas of charity, medicine, education, and humanistic and whereas the Tai Chi Foundation Canada members have exemplified their devotion, generosity, volunteerism, and their efforts have reflected in the compassionate nature of Buddhism and their kindness to humanity, providing relief of pain and suffering of people in need and whereas in celebration of the 23rd anniversary of the Buddhist Compassion Relief Tai Chi Foundation Canada, Tai Chi continues its service to the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 10 as Chi Chi Day in the City of Surrey. Getting there, guys? Cloverdale Rodeo and Exhibition Week, May 11 through 18, whereas the Cloverdale Rodeo and Exhibition has been in existence since 1888 and whereas the sport of rodeo forms part of Canadians' national heritage and whereas the Cloverdale Rodeo and Exhibition encourages the cultivation of the soil and the general development of all agricultural resources of the Lower Fraser Valley and the fostering of every branch of mechanical and household arts, calculated, I think that means making pie and jam, calculated to increase the happiness of home life and whereas the sport of rodeo has evolved from cowboys working with cattle and horses and whereas the rodeo and exhibition encourages friendly competition for hundreds of families throughout the Lower Fraser Valley. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the week of May through 18 as Cloverdale Rodeo and Exhibition Week in the City of Surrey and invite the citizens of Surrey and the Lower Fraser Valley to join in the celebration. National Missing Children's Month, May 2015, whereas Childfine British Columbia, a provincial member of Childfine Canada, is a nonprofit registered charitable organization incorporated in 1984 and whereas the mandate of Childfine British Columbia is to educate children and adults about abduction prevention, to promote awareness of the problem of missing children, and to assist in the location of missing children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May as Childfine's Green Ribbon of Hope Month and May 25 as National Missing Children's Day in the City of Surrey. I urge our citizens to wear a green ribbon as a symbol of hope for the recovery of all missing children and to remain vigilant in our common desire to protect and nurture the youth of our province. MS Awareness Month, May 2015, whereas multiple sclerosis is a chronic, often disabling, neurological disease affecting an estimated 100,000 Canadians and more than 8,000 British Colombians and whereas multiple sclerosis symptoms vary widely and may lead to problems with numbness, coordination, vision, and speech, as well as extreme fatigue and even paralysis and whereas there is no known cause of, prevention of, or cure for multiple sclerosis. Whereas together, we will find ways to enhance the quality of lives for people affected by multiple sclerosis and to find a cure to end MS. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 2015 as MS Awareness Month for Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada in the City of Surrey. And lastly, the National Hospice Month of May 2015, whereas May is National Hospice Month and whereas hospices across Canada will host their annual hike for hospice on Sunday, May the 3rd and whereas 2015 marks White Rock South Surrey Hospice with 32-plus years of serving the South Surrey and White Rock residents free of charge. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the month of May as National Hospice Month in the City of Surrey and encourage all our citizens to recognize the importance of hospice care by participating in their local hike for hospice events. Thank you, and that is, oh, now, moving on to corporate reports. C055 Anti-Spam Compliance Policy.
So, move corporate report R055, anti-spam compliance policy.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R056, Acquisition of Properties at 13790 and 13804102 Avenue.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R057, Quarterly Financial Report for First Quarter of 2015.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
14 Annual Financial Statement.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Gill.
If I could just make a couple of comments, just given that I'm the Chair of Finance and Chair of Audit, to think that one of the objectives that we tried to achieve in our 2014 financial report is always to have our external auditors and again, once again this year, KPMG has indicated that they are satisfied that the city's financial statements have been fairly stated in all material aspects and it's a significant achievement for us at the city, but we've been consistently doing that over the last number of years. I think that it's really important to recognize our efficiencies that we have at the city and also to recognize the reporting that our staff does. We've been recognized internationally for our reporting, so I just really wanted to thank the staff for your tremendous work that you've done. I just want to thank you once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gill. Parks and Rec 059.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And Counselor Villanouve, speaking to the artist?
Yes, I just appreciate the support. The recommended artist for Hazel Grove Park, and it's part of the public art program, that 1.25% of the construction projects of the park go towards public art and an adjudication process with selection panel selected Susan Point to do the public art sculpture for Hazelwood Park and I'm just very excited about her because she's a co-sailage artist, very well-known. She has a major piece in our South Surrey Recreation Centre and several pieces in the City of Vancouver that are renowned. So, we're very fortunate to have her. It was unanimous decision by the selection panel, which included a member of the community as well. So, I'm thinking the public is really going to enjoy another signature piece by this artist in the community.
It's going to be great when we can unveil that one. R060.
Move the recommendation for awarding the tree watering contract.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R061, Sport Tourism Grant Program.
Second.
Madam Mayor, if you could.
Counselor Hain.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think this is quite an important one. This is the establishment of a $50,000 fund that groups can access next year in 2016 and it really coincides with our sport tourism initiatives and planning that we're doing in the city and this allows sport groups, whether they're regional, provincial, national, or international, to apply for grants to help offset the rental of facility and fields and so on in our community. And I think this is going to really help to continue to encourage sport tourism in our community and it's very good for, not only our sport tourism, but for our active and healthy communities and our youth development programs as well.
Thank you for those comments. Is that available for the vehicle for public speaking, that trailer that we have?
That vehicle, the vehicle that you're referring to, Madam Mayor, is available through Tourism Surrey and that can be rented through Tourism Surrey and those funds could help offset that as well.
Offset the grant?
Exactly, yes, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Planning and Development, R062, the Poverty Reduction Plan.
I'll move that recommendation, acceptance of the update on implementation of the Surrey Poverty Reduction Plan.
Second. Second. Counselor Villanouve.
Thank you very much. I just want to just give a little bit of update, as we had mentioned earlier, on the Surrey Poverty Reduction Plan and I'm sure Counselor Lefranck will have some comments on this report as well. But coming out of social planning in 2010, the committee felt that working on the issues of poverty in our city were its highest priority and they went through a community consultation process and council adopted the Surrey Poverty Reduction Plan in 2012. And during that period of time, we, really, were important for us was to emphasize the issues of transportation, housing, income, and support. And we clearly articulated who was responsible and could help in these various areas to address the problem, taking it down to what the municipalities and cities could do, what the provincial and federal governments can do, and what organizations and individuals could do. There were 75 recommendations that came out of the report and I'm proud to say that the report has not been sitting on the shelf, but has been moving forward in the community. And there is now a Poverty Reduction Coalition made up by broad members, including the universities and the health districts, the members of the city, and Social Policy Committee, as well as a number of funding agents who fund sort of keeping the committee going and two or three community forums that we have developed so that we continually consult with the community, report back, and move forward with the ideas that they think can be beneficial over a number of years. And I want to acknowledge the work that the library has done in helping support us by publishing low-cost and free brochures so people in the community that are living below the poverty line, they know and understand what services are available in the city and the library is keeping those updated and the city has them on their website now, compliments of the engineering department. And I think people have found that very useful. And we certainly have had some pilot projects and I'm going to let Counselor Lefranck sort of highlight the Somali Women and Community Leaders in Housing First landlord project in a couple of minutes. And the coalition has really been an advocacy body for change. And as I mentioned earlier, we are one of only two provinces that doesn't have a provincial poverty reduction plan and that's certainly one of our goals, is to have this province have a plan and then nationally as well. We're also a member of the city's Reducing Poverty and so we're sharing ideas across the country on how we can help raise people above the poverty line and even, for example, tax credits for seniors and families are already beginning to do that and those are the kind of initiatives we're acknowledging and trying to support. And of course, the city and this council continue our advocacy to ensure that we can eliminate the requirement for our poorest of poor refugees, the government-assisted refugees that come to this country, from war-torn countries to have to pay back their transportation and pre-medical screening loans that can be up to $10,000 to $15,000 for families who really come here with nothing. And we feel that's really an unfair burden and makes it very difficult for them to start moving forward to become inclusive members of the community, not only socially, but from an economic position. So, if, I'm really pleased that council has supported the endeavors and Steve Dooley, who's Executive Director of Simon Fraser University, co-chairs the coalition and Counselor Lefranck has been a strong advocate and worker on this coalition. So, Madam Mayor, if we could ask Counselor Lefranck to highlight.
Thank you, Counselor Villanouve. Counselor Lefranck?
Sure, and I don't have a lot to add to what you've said, Counselor Villanouve, and I do want to congratulate you on your leadership and thank the Surrey City Council for really supporting this initiative since 2012. I think one of the things I could definitely say is that we are leaders across the province. Our poverty reduction strategy and plan is one of the most comprehensive in our province and we're, it's something that we're very proud of. But those pilot projects that are quite, something I'm very proud of and I know that we're proud of is the Somali Women's Project, which is a community economic development project, working with some of our most vulnerable citizens and some of the women in our development project come from living in refugee camps for up to 20 years. All of them are single moms. All of them come with various levels of literacy and numeracy that makes living in Canada a real struggle for them. They don't have a literacy and numeracy skills in their first language and coming to Canada is very, a challenge for them. One project that we're particularly excited about is the Community Leaders Igniting Change, which is a partnership with SFU Surrey and BD School of Business, where we have identified 18 community leaders and we're putting them through a leadership training program and they're going back into their town centers, Newton, Cloverdale, South Surrey, City Centre, et cetera, to carry out projects over the next year that will help to lift their own community out of poverty. I'm missing one more project.
Housing First.
Oh, and the Housing First Initiative. One thing that is happening in our community and at the federal level is that the federal government has switched their homeless partnering strategy to a Housing First Initiative. So, Housing First means that we're housing our homeless and those most difficult to house before we ask them to give up their addictions or deal with their mental health issue. It's a really proactive approach and in Red Deer, in fact, they have almost eliminated homelessness. So, we're taking this approach here in Surrey. There's huge investments coming our way from the federal government and the provincial government that will really make inroads. But in the interim, the Housing First Project is actually working with landlords to help them understand the benefits of housing our hardest-to-house. It's a really exciting project that we're quite passionate about and will help to really reduce homelessness in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Lefranck, and thank you for your work on social innovation too, because I think it's a nice marriage of what is going on with the poverty reduction work. So, I'm looking forward to the social innovation project that may assist us in that poverty reduction plan as well. Moving on to bylaws.
Move third on each one.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on two.
Second.
All those in favor, approved, carried.
On two.
Opposed.
Opposed. Opposed. There's one opposed?
Two opposed.
Two opposed, okay.
On two, move the issuance of the development variance permit.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed.
You're still opposed.
On third, move three, third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final on three.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move 4A.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move 5A.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Development variance permit 6A.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I move that development variance permit 79104, sorry, 7914024900 be approved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask staff for a little feedback on this one because there were a number of people that... of people that—in particular, that work in that location, that were opposed to this, and I'm just wondering for a little bit of explanation, if we could, for the variance of going from 40 feet to 72 feet, and the rationale behind that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, through you to Councilor Hayne. Staff brought forward a report, land use report, two weeks ago on this matter, and there was rationale provided in the report, including the fact that it was located in a commercial parking lot area. It was considered to be relatively distant from residences, and the height variance was not considered to be excessive, given the monopole design, and staff did work with the applicants to try to improve the look of that tower, and we felt that what was provided was satisfactory for that area.
Great, thank you. I wanted that brought forward, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilor. Good? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On seven, move the development variance permit.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move development variance permit on eight.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Nine. I'll move the—
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move development variance permit on 10.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the supportive issuance of the development variance permit, 7915001200.
All those in favor, opposed—do I have a second? Did I have a second? Sorry. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on. Twelve. Is—no, first I have to call for any persons wishing to make representations to this bylaw, which is a road closure bylaw on 18422. Is there anyone wishing to make representation on this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final adoption on twelve.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On thirteen, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Fourteen.
Move first on fourteen.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second on fourteen.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first on fifteen.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second on fifteen.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On the GVRD tax requisition bylaw, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On the Surrey Close and Remove the Dedication Highway for a Portion of Road Adjacent to 15545, 26th Avenue and Adjacent Addresses, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion? Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Subut.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.